Welcome to the Capstone Conversation, where you learn about what's happening in the Greater East Bay. I am your host, Jared Ash. Today, I am joined by a friend of mine, Ross Hillisheim. We are going to talk about two different topic areas today. One, we are going to talk about planning and land use. Ross has served a number of years on the Contra Costa County Planning Commission. We're going to dive into land use and what it's even to be a planning commissioner, as a lot of cities are going to start to put some new people on their planning commission. We want people to know what that is like. And then we're also going to talk about Ross's day job, which is building hydrogen and renewable energy fueling stations. First, we will dive into planning, but stay tuned for information on these fueling stations of the future. Ross, could you tell us a little bit more about yourself and your background overall?
Good morning. Thank you for having me. I enjoy listening to your podcasts online and on LinkedIn. My wife and I have been Contra Costa County residents for about 14 years. We've lived in Pleasant Hill and Alamo. We have four young daughters, five, seven, 10, and 11. The reason I tell you that is my view on the world is I have a young family. And I'm also a millennial. I'm 42 years old. I went to law school in the county. I went to JFK Law School in Pleasant Hill. My undergrad's in economics. And I've been in the fueling, transportation, development world for over 10 years.
One of the things I like about Ross is we actually know each other from running and cycling. We've done track and races together. I am a girl dad too, as most of with girls at five, seven, and 10. So I don't know how he does that fourth one because three is a handful.
Wife is a saint.
She puts up with you. She has to be. It's important to understand as part of that background, you had petroleum, gas, traditional gasoline stations that you've developed in Contra Costa County. And now you're moving into this new stuff. How long have you been on the County Planning Commission? How'd you arrive to that role? And tell us just a little bit about what does the planning commission do?
I've been on the planning commission now for five years. I just started my second term. As a planning commissioner, you are appointed by the Board of Supervisors. It's not an elected position. There are seven planning commissioners in Contra Costa County. Five are appointed by the Board of Supervisors. Each supervisor appoints one commissioner. And then there are two at-large commissioners. I'm one of the at-large commissioners. About five, six years ago, I called my supervisor, who I live in Candace Anderson's district area. I called her. I told her I wanted to get involved. And she gave me a long list of all the different county commissions and boards that I could be part of. I chose two at that time to apply for. They chose me to be on the planning commission, which I've served for five years. I'm the Chair of the Alamo Police Services Committee. In that committee, we interface monthly with the Sheriff's Department and public safety officials in the area to make sure our neighborhood's safe.
That's important for Alamo, just because it's a unique, unincorporated community that seems like a city, but it really isn't. It relies on the Sheriff's Department.
Yep, you're exactly right.
Tell us, what is the planning commission that the county oversee? What is its jurisdiction? What are some projects that typically come before it?
Okay, great question. So the, the planning commission, we are a legislative body. We meet twice a month with county staff. Each meeting is a public meeting where anyone from the public can show up and provide public comment or comment specifically on a certain agenda item. We work with the Department of Conservation and Development, which is a county department that basically are planning and building department. But in, in Contra Costa County, it's called DCD. We oversee, we're a majority of the things that we do is we are an advisory board to the Board of Supervisors. When a major project needs an EIR or a general plan update or zoning updates, that goes for a final decision to the Board of Supervisors. But we weigh in first. Some of the things that we oversee and are the final decision commission body on are subdivisions, land use permits, development permits. I, I love being on the planning commission. I would advise people to take a look at our public meetings. They're online. You can watch the videos or come in person. But the, our commission sees a wide range of things. Everything from major subdivisions where there's hundreds of homes or hundreds of units being permitted, to some of the refineries in our county. Three of the four refineries are within county jurisdiction. Any land use planning issues that those refineries have, they, they come before our commission. Just this last month, those are the bigger ticket items. And we see even small things like last month or earlier this month, we heard a couple of applications where literally neighbors in unincorporated Walnut Creek, Alamo, Martinez area would come before the commission about a tree permit or about the location of their driveway to their home and how that affects the neighborhood. It's a really fun commission. I'm a nerd about this. I like it. I like to read EIRs. I like land use. I like planning. The wide range of different things that we hear really keeps things interesting.
That's a good overview. Let's dive into one of those as an example. Talk about a builder coming in and creating either a new subdivision or houses. Talk through what was the process like? How did it?
One of the first meetings that I was part of was a large multifamily housing development in unincorporated Walnut Creek. The Contra Costa Center in Walnut Creek, Pleasant Hill is not city jurisdiction. Those large buildings, the BART station is actually within the county jurisdiction. One of the first development projects that I oversaw was a 200 or 300 unit multifamily development close to the BART station, close to transportation, close to the bike path. That was one. And then I think something different than high-density housing development is something we saw a couple of years ago. It was out at the end of Camino Tassahara, east of Danville and east of Santa Monica. There's a lot of open space out there, basically the foothills of Mount Diablo. There was an applicant that came to the commission. It was interesting in the development process for years, if not a decade. But basically, the final decision of that was there was about 700 to 800 acres that this applicant owned. The different agencies that oversee development in that area created an agreement with the property developer that 80% of the land would be either put into a conservation easement or conveyed to the Parks District for open space. And the other 10, 20% would be single-family detached homes. I think overseeing developments, that one to me was really interesting because 700 acres whittled down to maybe 100 acres of development while protecting the other 600. We want to take care of the environment and have open space and parks and clean air. At the same time, we want housing. It's such an interesting thing to oversee and weigh in on. One was approved. I think there are some issues right now with different agencies as it relates to water and possibly transportation that our commission does not oversee. That developer is going to figure that out as the months and years progress.
I think I'm familiar with that project. I hear the issue is that there's not sewer. I think that's East Bay MUD's territory and there's not water and sewer out there. And there's a disagreement on who pays for it. And the developer's saying, hey, I need the pipes out here. And East Bay MUD's saying, we don't want to take it off. I'm sure there's the issue of who pays for that because it's out there. It's at the end of the lines. So you have to connect and build out new lines. And that gets expensive per mile of pipe. A million dollars. It was a million dollars per mile of pipe, but now it's probably more given the cost of construction rise and everything.
But I think, I think you're right, Jared. Good call.
We need the housing. And I think that's important to show because if you look at areas in the county's jurisdiction versus cities jurisdictions, Black Hawk, as an example, is not part of the city of Danville. It has a Danville address, but it operates completely independent of that. There are those pockets in Walnut Creek. There's even Donuts where it's 100% surrounded by Walnut Creek. You get out to Discovery Bay, Alamo. All of that is unincorporated areas. In fact, 25 years ago, Arinda and Oakley were both newer cities because they were all unincorporated.
You're right.
What advice would you give to new commissioners coming into either a city or a county planning? What is the process you would say to educate themselves and get ready for those roles?
Good questions. I'm not paid by the county, essentially a volunteer role. What I would suggest or any advice I would have is, from my perspective, I think it's really important to be engaged and knowledgeable about land use and about land use policy. Read up on that. Read the material. Some of the packets that we get are this thick. It's hard to go through it all, but go through it the best you can. As the new generation comes up, the people our age and the younger generation, I think there needs to be more community involvement and more public involvement. As people reach out to you as a commissioner or any board commission that you sit on, you should engage with the public, hear them out, hear their concerns, and try to create a common ground. I mentioned the, the tree permit or the shifting of a driveway. That can become more adversarial at maybe even a large subdivision or a refinery changing over to different types of fuels. You have neighborhoods show up. We'll have anywhere between 40 to 80 people there. We'll be up till two o'clock in the morning, listening to the public. Be really engaged with planning and understanding the mechanisms of how that works, the legal issues and some of the policy-related issues. Take the time to read the material, think about it, and then engage with the public.
There's limits that most people don't understand about your role and what you can approve and not approve. If something's already zoned for it, you're very limited on what you can do. Matt Francois, a council member in Walnut Creek and a land use attorney, was saying like, this place was zoned for a restaurant. The residents appealed to the city council because planning accepted it, but we didn't have a choice legally because it was already zoned for it.
Correct.
And that's important. You're limited on certain things you could do because there was already a consensus from the county in their plan. This is a retail zone. This is a housing zone.
Yeah, you're exactly right. One of the hot topic items has been housing the last couple of years. From the state's perspective, state housing laws can supersede local land use laws as it relates to bonus density, height restrictions, stuff like that, where sometimes neighbors are not happy with density. They don't want a multifamily home next to their single-family homes. Sometimes if the zoning designation calls for this, then that property owner has a property right to develop what the zoning allows.
Yeah, and it's interesting. I have an incorporated area. They have a driveway easement issue with their neighbor and where a drainage goes. And it's led to multiple lawsuits and it's costing both families significant money just over this dispute and the need for, for flood control related to it.
There are a lot of, so when applicant comes before the commission or they make an application, the applicant usually has to hire different consultants and professionals who are very specific in their field of study. For example, drainage. I am not a hydrologist. I'm not a drainage expert. I can read reports and get an understanding of what's going on. And I'm in this business, so I understand more. But at the end of the day, if a civil engineer or a hydrologist come forward and says, the property will drain this way at this flow rate, then we essentially have to believe them because they're a licensed professional and they carry insurance.
I think that's good. Anything else on the planning side?
I think some of your listeners may know this. We just approved our latest general plan, our 2040 general plan and climate action plan. The updated zoning is going to be coming here in the next year or so. The state of California creates laws that say every jurisdiction, whether it be a city or county, need to have a general plan that updates zoning, economic policies, housing policy, public safety, things like that. As it relates to the planning commission, we, we in the Board of Supervisors just approved that in the last couple of months. So I think as your listeners look to what's happening in the unincorporated county, they can look to our general plan, which is really easy to navigate and understand the general direction of Contra Costa County. Check that out.
Yeah, we did an episode, if, if people scroll back and they want to learn more about that, with Will Nelson and Maureen Tombs, thank you, with the county where they went through the details of the county general plan. Up next, in 2026, there will be a ballot initiative for the urban land boundary within the county. By law, they have to say, okay, this is areas we're protecting. This is areas where we need for growth. And they just make adjustments as people continue to learn and mapping gets better and, and all of that stuff.
The other thing I'll comment on as we pivot away from the planning commission is, my wife and I live in a single-family home. My, my neighbor to the west built a home that's twice the size of ours and it's two stories. It's a big, beautiful home and they're great friends of ours. It's pretty close to our property and they can see directly into our backyard. Our other neighbor on the other side built an ADU, which I think the setback is three feet. It's three to four feet off of our property line. And so not only as a commissioner do I sympathize with neighbors and development and what happens in their neighborhoods, I also empathize from the standpoint of, look, people or applicants, property owners should be able to build what they want for the most part. And sometimes that affects you as neighbors. At the end of the day, look at the planning commission meetings. I try to do a good job of telling people when they're upset, hey, look, at the end of the day, whatever the decision is, we have to be neighbors. We live in the same community. Let's move forward together on hopefully some kind of common ground. I remember when they were building the home behind our home and I thought, oh, my gosh. It's going to look directly into my backyard. It's not that big of a deal.
People should remember to be cordial to our neighbors and our friends and, and help each other. And that's come up on a few episodes before. All right, let's talk about the fueling stations of the future. You used to have gas stations and developed those. You've sold those off and are now developing some of these renewable fuel stations of different types. Talk about why are you doing that? What is the demand coming up? Give us an overview within that to start.
The reason I've pivoted towards cleaner fueling stations and travel plazas is there are a lot of trucks on the road and those trucks deliver a lot of goods to restaurants and homes. Everything on my desk probably showed up here on a truck. I think it's estimated there's about two and a half million trucks on the road in California a day. Trucks are one of, the transportation industry is one of the highest greenhouse gas emissions emitter from an industry sector perspective. I'm 42 years old. I think that my generation and the younger generations would like to have cleaner air and be a little bit more responsible to the environment. At the same time, we got to keep trucks on the road. They're still industry. There's still business interests that are really important as well. What I've tried to do on a couple of sites here in Northern California is incorporate not only the fuels of today, but also the fuels of the future. And that's really where, the three main fuels are your gas and your renewable diesel, hydrogen, electricity, EVs.
This is just a question because I know a bunch about transportation planning. EV trucks are harder because the, the distance they can carry with the loads to the power consumption. Most trucks are going hydrogen or for the distance or what?
Yeah, Jared, it's, it's my opinion that liquid fuels like hydrogen and renewable diesel are the fuels for trucks, long-haul trucks. If someone's going to get a truck in Oakland and drive to Reno and then drive to Salt Lake City or across the country, that is a liquid fuel. EV trucks, on the other hand, in my opinion, the, the research I've done and the industry experts I do business with, electrification of short-haul trucks or trucks around the ports or trucks in warehouses that can basically leave the warehouse, go out for a delivery and come back that day and recharge at night. That's a viable solution for short-haul drainage trucks. But long haul, you're going from Seattle to LA, Portland to San Francisco. It's my opinion that's going to be hydrogen and renewable diesel.
And so for those short trucks, you're talking about the Amazon truck that comes to deliver our packages in our neighborhood, right?
A truck that would leave the port of Oakland and go to Tracy, right? Hour and a half, two-hour commute, come back.
No, that's helpful to understand. What goes into these stations in terms of planning for them, developing them? Are they on truck routes?
You're on the right track. There are trucking routes throughout California, all the different highways and freeways. And even some of your roads around town are identified for smaller trucking routes. So we're, you're not going to build a hydrogen truck facility or travel plaza in downtown Walnut Creek. But on freeways and highways outside of the Greater Bay Area, you bet, like I'm working on one right now in Monterey County, another one in Calusa County. These are all about an hour outside the Bay Area where there is more area for a travel plaza. Couple of things to keep in mind with the travel plaza is a trucker that's on the road six days a week, he or she will go to a travel plaza and it's a small city for them. They can get fuel, a cup of coffee, a shower, do laundry and park. They're mandated to stop and rest for a certain amount of hours for public safety. You and I don't want to be driving down the freeway with our family next to a trucker that's been on the road for 30 hours straight. That totally unsafe. So they're mandated to stop. And these little truck stops are really a small city in and of itself.
Yeah, outside of California, I'm even more familiar with that because they plan them into the roadways in places like Florida and Texas and Arizona here. You're right, they're limited in size in the Bay Area. So you don't see these big stations like you do off of the Florida Turnpike or the Dallas and Denver Expressways.
Thanks for telling me that. I'm still focused on California. Chose to raise our family here. We love this place. People have always asked me, hey, you want to go do one in Arizona or Texas? I think I need to stay close to home. I understand California. I love California. There's plenty of opportunity here. Maybe one day when my company gets massive, we'll go to Texas.
And charging for individuals has come up as an issue for some of those long-range trips up to Northern California, where it's maybe more rural, even down to Southern California, that, oh, if I find charging, sometimes the charging stations don't work. Talk a little bit about that and what we will call range anxiety in regular cars.
Hey, that's a great question. The new California Building Code requires new developments to install EV charging facilities. Every new facility that I have, I've required by the state to put in a certain amount of chargers. And there are a lot of other private businesses through tax incentives, through subs, through sub, that will come in and install more and sometimes pay rent or some kind of revenue share agreement. What I've noticed, my, my wife is from Southern California. We drive to Orange County a couple of times a years. What I'm noticing is not only are chargers now directly connected to the grid through a transformer, I'm noticing that some of these EV charging facilities now have canopies for solar and battery storage. I think it's just viable and a great solution.
And talk about hydrogen in the trucks. Where you get the hydrogen from? You're bringing it into these fueling stations. How is it different from gas? What can you share about just what is liquid hydrogen and how does it work and process?
I don't know too much about the science of it, Jared. Like exactly how they make hydrogen and exactly where it comes from. On one of my properties, they're talking about actually doing hydrogen production on the facility. Not just having it produced somewhere else and trucking it to the facility to be sold onsite, but also having hydrogen production onsite. I think there are some tax incentives and government incentives to, to do that kind of a thing. The nice thing about hydrogen is the payload question we were just talking about. It's hard to load a truck full of lumber or meat with a heavy payload and have it be EV and go very far. Hydrogen is the exact opposite. A hydrogen tank is much smaller and the efficiency of hydrogen for the payload makes complete sense.
What is the cost of hydrogen compared to diesel?
It's more expensive. And the diesel prices, the renewable diesel prices in the state of California and nationwide are subject to tax credits and blend credits because the government is incentivizing energy and oil companies to transition into cleaner fuels. So the actual cost is higher sometimes than what's actually on the street.
Interesting. How does that affect their pricing? It's great because we're going to this new fuel. There's less emissions. There's all of those benefits. But at the end of the day, all of our goods and services go up in price, right? If your fuel costs more.
Sure. I love your questions. You're bringing me back to my undergrad in economics. I think the thought on the consumer is this. It's a combination of being subjective, being a good steward of the community and environment, at the same time, having a benched business and quality of life interests, right? We, we can't pay $10 a ga, $10 a gallon for hydrogen or diesel or gas. It's just going to cripple the economy. I think the hope and the idea of the government is, hey, let's incentivize cleaner fuels and let's incentivize those with tax incentives so that they're cheaper to the consumer. As the industry progresses and there's more private industry and there's no more private investment in these types of cleaner fuels, then the subsidy can move away and the economies of scale of the industry that's been progressing over years can bring the price down.
We've seen that with everything from big screen TVs, computers and phones that as consumers start adopting it, prices come down over time. So 2 million plus trucks on the road. How many other fueling stations are being built? You talked about three. Is there room for 500 in California?
Oh, this is such another good question. What we said earlier, Walnut Creek's not getting a, a travel plaza. Neither is Pleasanton. Most likely Oakland not either. There's literally not the land use, right? It's, it's my opinion that these travel plazas, there's probably only going to be another 20 to 30 in the whole state of California.
And is that enough to feed these?
It's going to have to be for a long-haul trucking.
So coming out of the port of Oakland, huge trucking center. You can't even get the fueling stations there. Or could you have a smaller one that's just a fueling station that doesn't need to be this whole travel center? Because you, you don't necessarily need to have the truckers take the break there. They could get coffee, but.
Yeah, you, so you're exactly right. Just a fueling facility, for sure. Oakland, Walnut Creek can even do that 100%. But a full-scale travel plaza that's 10 to 20 acres with all the amenities that we spoke about earlier, the, the closest ones to the Bay Area, it's, it's amazing. I don't think very many people know this, but the closest ones are in Sacramento and, and outside of Tracy.
Good to know. Let's talk about SEQA. As you go through this, environmental concerns, you see it on planning. New developments have to go through SEQA planning. How do the environmental regs in California impact what you're doing to build these centers?
SEQA from an entitlement standpoint for clean travel plazas is the number one issue that I have to navigate. And my thought on SEQA, I'm not a SEQA attorney, disclosure in SEQA is the number one. As long as you disclose what uses and what impacts your development is going to have, and this goes for an apartment complex or a travel plaza. As long as you disclose the different environmental impacts and can mitigate for some of those or show you can't, then you should be able to navigate SEQA. Specifically with travel plazas and some state laws. SEQA was passed by Governor Ronald Reagan in the seventies, before I was born. And I think I don't, I wasn't around then, so this is just my, my thought. Is back then, we, the state of California, did want to create an act to protect the environment from development. We didn't want it to become New York City or Philadelphia. This is the West, it's the, the mountains you have behind you. Over the last 50-plus years, SEQA has become almost, I don't say weaponized, but is it really protecting the environment? Or is it protecting business interests and neighbors who don't want a project? I think SEQA needs to be reformed. I'm seeing that from state senators, state legislators, state assembly people from California, Democrat and Republican, saying, there's some issues here with SEQA. We probably need to, we probably need to relook at this. But specifically with, with my types of developments, greenhouse gas emissions is a big deal. If trucks are entering and exiting the property, there's an impact to greenhouse gas emissions. There's a traffic impact as well. The state of California passed some SEQA streamlining laws as it relates to EV charging and hydrogen fueling facilities. And I rely on those as I entitle sites.
And as you go through the entitlement process and developing these sites, do you run into local opposition like we talked about with developments? Or is it because they're out of the way in terms of size and scale? What are you finding in terms of opposition?
I, six years ago, a smaller gas station, like your typical Chevron or 7-Eleven gas station, was very hard to get entitled. And there was a lot of opposition. Now, at these larger facilities off of freeways, generally in smaller towns, they're much more open to this kind of economic activity. It brings a massive amount of tax revenue to the local city or jurisdiction. There's an employment base that, that it brings as well. And these products, it's not like I'm demolishing an apartment complex to put up a travel plaza. But the land that I look at and entitle has usually been vacant for decades. And the people do want some kind of economic activity.
I was talking to somebody who is building hydrogen production facilities, which is different than the fueling stations. They are running into opposition from environmental groups concerned about air quality, which is interesting because hydrogen fuel for trucks reduces air emissions and everything else.
Yeah, it's, it's zero carbon from a fueling perspective. And actually, the byproduct is water. If the byproduct is water, I wonder what quality that water is. And I wonder what kind of treatment it would take to actually have it be usable by people or crops. It could be phenomenal. Someone's going to. It could be phenomenal. Someone's going to figure that out.
What should the average person know, the average policymaker here in the East Bay be aware of when it comes to hydrogen fueling stations?
Great, Jared. I don't think there's an answer we're going to have overnight and industry is not going to change overnight. So what do we need to do? We need to be looking towards the future for cleaner fuels and incentivizing these types of developments in specific areas. Sometimes people get up there and they think they have an answer for something overnight. There are hundreds of thousands of jobs, billions of dollars in an industry that doesn't just shift overnight. Yes, technology is getting better and things are moving quicker. I think this is a process that's going to take years, but with the right kind of leadership and focus on the future, we're going to have cleaner fuels and more trucks on the road and goods delivered faster.
And do you know what percentage of trucks are hydrogen now and what's the timeline to, to get another big chunk?
It, it's less than 1% right now. The hydrogen companies that I work with, they, they're anticipating two to 3% increases per year over the next 10 years. So it could get over 20% in the next 10 years.
A, a long transformation coming. If you like this topic about hydrogen fuel, coming up next week, we will have a guest who is a national expert in hydrogen policy who lives here in the East Bay.
I think pivoting back to the beginning of our conversation, if the transportation sector is the highest greenhouse gas emissions sector in the economy, if in the next 10 years, 20% of that is zero emissions, that's a great win.
Ross, thanks for joining us and your perspective and expertise in two different topic areas.
Thank you, Jared. You're a good man.
Wait, don't leave yet. Hit subscribe. Make sure you get the weekly updates. We have a new episode every Wednesday for stuff happening in the East Bay. In the meantime, follow me on LinkedIn, Jared Ash, or check out our firm where we have a weekly newsletter and blog at Capstone Government Affairs on LinkedIn. Thanks for joining us today on the Capstone Conversation.